And what happened during the planning commission on February 27?
The planning commission had a discussion on it and a vote was passed to support the zoning change. And the vote was six to one, one member abstaining.
And so I have a copy of the planning commission eighty minutes from February 27th, 2023. Mark is hearing officer two. Does he have that document already?
I do.
Is that referenced?
It does.
So once the planning commission noted to bring the board of supervisors, what does the board of supervisors say?
On July 10th, it was put in front of the board supervisors. And the applicant had asked to hold a public hearing, if you're here this evening, to listen to the proposed zoning change. That was received in a three to two vote in favor of holding the public hearing.
And you have a document in front of you, Mark, as hearing officer three. Is that correct?
I do.
In case I want to add to your minutes?
That is the minutes of the July 10th meeting.
So when the board of supervisors authorize a public meeting, what actions did you take following that?
After the board approved the meeting, I sent a copy of the proposed changes to the Berks County Planning Commission on July 13th, which on August 31st, I received a letter in return where the Berks County Planning Commission also supported the zoning change.
And that letter, is it Mark, as hearing officer four?
It is.
And was the night's hearing advertised in the local newspaper?
Yes, it was.
When was it advertised?
It was advertised in the Reading Eagle on November 3rd and November 10th.
And you have in front of you, I believe, hearing officer five, a copy of the newspaper advertisement?
Yes.
Is that the address?
It is.
Was the property posted?
It was. On, no, I'm sorry, October 30th, 23th of this year, I posted the property myself.
Do you have photos of the postings?
I do.
Are they listed as hearing officer six?
They are.
And then can you tell me what hearing officer seven is?
It is a current, so it is a portion of Vexeter Township's current zoning map. That shows the parcels in their current zoning for this district.
Also, was notice mailed, is certified mailed to the front of you, I understand, the three parcels?
It was.
And then hearing officer eight, it is a document that stars the light industrial district. Do you have that in front of you?
I do not. I know what you're referencing. I don't believe we, I don't believe we, yeah.
So we'll end it.
Sure.
Could you tell me what the first document is, the light industrial district?
This is ordinance 30, 390-24, which is our light industrials zoning district ordinance. And it will tell you all of the regulations and what is allowed, regulations, limitations, and basically what is allowed in the district.
Okay. Can you tell me what the other document, which is Mark, as hearing officer nine, is?
This will be the same information. This is 390-18, which is our urban residential zoning district ordinance. And it would provide the same information, regulations, limitations, and what is allowed in that district.
Do you have anything to add?
No, I think, I think we covered it. In wrapping it up, this, this proposed change, I believe, would, would allow for homes to be built if the change is, is done through. This would give the applicant the ability to build homes in the district, in the area, which is now like industrial. That's about it.
Hearing officer exhibits one through nine have been admitted to the record. And with that, we'll turn to the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Greg Edelman here on behalf of Metropolitan Development. First of all, we appreciate the opportunity to present to the board this evening and holding this public hearing. As many of you are aware, we have been in front of the board before with respect to this proposed zoning map change. Nothing's really changed in terms of what we are looking at here, but the proposal here is to change the property zoning to urban residential from light industrial. We believe it makes planning sense and has planning justification in that the area surrounding this property is residential or urban residential. And immediately adjacent to it is the shopping center, which is a commercial zone. So if we could just go through a quick presentation that I think you may have seen some parts previously to help explain why we believe this zoning map change makes sense. And then we can also talk very briefly about what Metropolitan would do if the zoning change is enacted and adopted by this board.
Ethan, I do have a copy of your presentation.
Yes.
How Mark is handling one.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. So we have it up here on the screen. As you are aware, the property is located directly behind the shopping center off of Lorraine Road. It does include property across the road as well, but it's generally this green area located between the industrial, the residential, and the commercial. We can go to the next slide. So actually, in your zoning, as was discussed, the current zoning of the property is light industrial, which is in this mustard yellow color. You can see that the industrial developed portion is actually located down this area. We believe that at some point, the intent was to have industrial come back up into this corridor. The shopping center is located around circling here. Urban residential is here. Suburban residential in this location on either side. So the proposal is the property, which is located in this area as well as what we call the Donut Bowl, is to make that from light industrial into our urban residential. So in essence, what you're going to do is you quarter off this area for residential and this area for industrial. Right now, it's almost like a thumb. You have a section of industrial that's sticking into areas that are predominantly residential around it. We believe this makes more planning sense. We believe that's why the township planning commission and the county planning commission support the rezoning. It also provides a better transition from residential to commercial instead of going residential to industrial to commercial. We believe it's more consistent with the surrounding properties that are directly impacted by future development of this property. Go to the next slide. At this point, I'd like to have Chuck France come up and just give a quick overview of what's being proposed. He also has a quick slide to be able to show the board what could possibly be developed under the existing light industrial. So you have something to compare it against as well, that we believe plans more prepossessed by you would consider rezoning the property from light industrial to urban residential. Chuck?
Actually, could you go back to the map in the previous slide?
Sure.
Just for clarity of the record, the three parcels are parcel in the northwestern corner, the Donut Bowl, as you say.
Right.
And then the other parcel actually goes across the street.
That's correct.
Giant parcel.
And I'm highlighting the rear property line, the further most place that's south of the property. So it is those three parcels in this area. So in essence, if you put your thumb up, this whole thumb area would then be rezoned prob, light industrial to urban residential. Thank you.
One clarification. Swipe off on the parcels. This is actually one partial, these two pieces. This is a small third partial here.
Oh, sorry.
So one, two.
So from the tech, from the, from the legal description, John's right, from the legal description, Lorraine Road is not subdividing the overall legal description of the parcel. The county treats this as one tax map number. And then this tiny area, another tax map and parcel number. In, in the post-development form, this property would all be consolidated into one. And then I'm guessing this property would be still left under the same tax parcel number, but as you'll see from our development plan, it's not proposed to be developed.
Sorry, sorry. Do you need to clarify those? John, right? Is that what I said?
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Chuck France. I'm with C2C Design Group. So we are the sub-engineering firm that was hired to help develop some preliminary, call them, sketch plans for the development of the property to also assist with the zoning as well. So what I'm going to talk about tonight is just briefly go over more of the property statistics, if you will, just to kind of give you an idea of what's on the property and what's being proposed on the property. Matt, you can talk to us. So I think everybody's familiar again with where Greg was showing you overview of where the property is located. The property is about 61 gross acres, so that would include both the property on the south side of Lorraine and then also the property on the north side of Donut Bowl, Lorraine. And then that also includes that little piece that John had mentioned, which is kind of the northwest corner as well. So all in total, you're over 61 acres gross. There's about 38 acres on the north side, and then there's 23 acres on the south side. So the site is predominantly wooded. If you're familiar with that site, again, I think you pretty much understand the natural condition out there. There are a number of natural resources located on the property. You have some steep slopes that are located on the property. Those steep slopes, if you're looking at our plan or exhibit, are going to be the areas that are shown in what I refer to maybe as the salmon colors that's showing up here on the property. So you have steep slopes. You also have one other here floodplain, which is a zone A heat. That floodplain is going to be the area that you see shaded in blue across the property. So that's your floodplain area. And then you're also going to have areas of wetlands located on the property. These are going to be the areas within the floodplain that are kind of hatched in. Those are your wetlands on the property. You also have a 150-foot wide medlet right away that runs both through the north property and the south property. Your ordinance does require us to subtract out areas from the total area in order to arrive at a net area for the property for the purposes of trying to develop a density requirement. So when you take some of those, when you take the natural features out of what your ordinance requires, the total site area is left with about 34 net acres when you subtract everything out. So again, you're going from about 61 down to 34. And as Greg had mentioned previously, the site is located in your LI district. So just going through what would be proposed should the property be rezoned to the urban zoning designation. What you see here is a sketch plan, concept plan. And again, I'll kind of reinforce, we haven't really done any preliminary engineering yet. Again, this is for the purposes of showing zoning, what we can get on here and reasonably approximate as far as a development plan. So what was being proposed is multifamily, which again is not allowed by RIT in the LI district. We are requesting the map change to allow the property to go to the urban residential district. Multifamily use is allowed by RIT in the urban zoning district. So if that would go through, it would be a by RIT use. We are proposing 216 one and two-bedroom apartment units. So it would be a total of six apartment buildings, which will be the larger buildings that you see here on the plan. Each of those have 36 units in each building. So you can arrive at your 216 units. Based on those 216 units, and again, using that net area that I had mentioned earlier, the proposed density is about six units per acre. So that six units compares to what's allowed by RIT, which is 10 units per acre. So we're again about 60% of what we allow density-wise based on your ordinance. If you look at the plan, there's also a number of other buildings that are located or areas that are hatched in on the property. I'll point a couple of them out just to give you an idea of what some of the amenities would be in the community. Up top here, you have a clubhouse with a pool area. You'll also have a dog park and a sport court. You'll also have some of these smaller buildings here, thinner buildings that you see around the edges of the parking lot are private garages. Those private garages typically have storage units on the end of them as well. So those are strictly for the residents of the community. There are lease agreements that the owner and manager would enter into with any of the residents that would be interested in using those. Those lease agreements specifically say that the private garages need to be used specifically for cars. They do conduct normal inspections or regular inspections of those private garages to make sure that they are in fact being used for vehicles. And then also provide for some storage on the ends, just for people being able to use that for sort of what they would like to. With respect to the access to the property, we had originally presented a plan to the township staff and planning commission that showed access from both Shellborne, which is here at the north end of the site, and then also a connection into Lorraine. After some discussion with staff, after discussion with the planning commission, after discussion with some of the residents, basically got the feedback that the connection at Lorraine is not desired just with respect to the condition of the road, traffic in that area. So where we ended up with as far as access is basically one primary point of access off of Shellborne. So Shellborne would get extended. That would be constructed as a paved cul-de-sac. And that would be the main entrance into the community. For the purposes of emergency vehicles and providing that second access point rather than having it come out to Lorraine, we currently show an emergency access coming back into the shopping center. I know that's something that the applicant has been working with the owner and the shopping center on as far as securing some sort of agreement in order to take access into the shopping center. So currently, the way the plan shows right now is that emergency access would be through the shopping center. With respect to parking facilities, we are proposing 277 open air spaces, so that would just be more of your traditional parking spaces. We're also proposing 105 private garages that I spoke about earlier. So that would give you a total of 382 parking spaces. That would currently have put us at a ratio of about 1.7 spaces per unit on this current plan. There are, as was mentioned earlier, there would be some discussion about parking ratio with respect to your ordinance. I know 1.7 is not currently meet your, your parking requirement. But I know with studies that Metropolitan has done in their communities, they have a ratio that they tend to like to use for parking specifically to basically make that as efficient as possible to not have a lot of vacant parking spaces that you're just ending up with paved area for purposes of stormwater, basically unnecessary paved area is kind of what they try to shoot for when they're doing their, their ratios and developing their studies within their communities for what they need for parking. With respect to utilities, the site will be served by public water and public sewer. So again, that's very early in the process as far as working with the facility company on water and sewer. On-site stormwater management facilities will meet the township and PAP regulations. Obviously, this site will be disturbing more than one acre, so we will be required to obtain an NPDES permit from the state. Again, that process, as I'm sure you're well aware, is a highly regulated process. So anything we do with respect to stormwater management will have to comply with the local and state regulations for stormwater. And then I'll just point out that we currently do not propose to do any development on those 23 acres that are located on the south side of Lorraine. So the development would stay primarily on the north side of Lorraine. So at this point, I'll pause and stop with respect to the existing, or I'm sorry, the proposed multifamily apartment and ask if there are any questions or clarifications you'd like me to make on the proposed multifamily use layout.
Let me ask a question. Is there anything on about this particular site, the topography or anything, the characteristics that make it less attractive for light industrial use as opposed to residential, do you have any?
Yeah, I think with respect to light industrial, likely on a site like this, you're going to end up with some, some larger buildings. Obviously, you're going to try to maximize the size of the buildings in those areas. So when you have a site like this, the topography, the earthwork is going to be a little bit greater with respect to larger buildings and the parking that's going to be located next to it. You've got a lot of trucks. You're going to have to make a lot of those areas flat. So the topography will lend itself more towards something that you're going to be able to do with smaller, separated buildings that you can make adjustments in the grade, parking areas as well, things that you can terrace work into the contours, you know, rather than having some of the larger buildings. Yeah, and that's a great transition. I can move into that. What we did, just for a point of comparison, then, is develop a site plan that would be in performance with your light industrial zoning district. So again, you'll see the, the road layout, the access is very similar to the apartment access with access coming from Shellborne, coming through the development, and again, another emergency access from the shopping center. Again, taking advantage of that topography or at least trying to minimize the earthwork, trying to place the buildings as far as the orientation and the size into the slopes in order to maximize the building sizes. And then also showing some areas, in this case, looking almost for tractor trailer use next to the buildings as well as employee parking next to the buildings, as you see there as well. So I think we were able to get ballpark of about 170,000 square feet of light industrial use with these buildings. So that would...
So typically, in my experience of doing industrial development, going back to your question, Chad, what's, what's maybe restrictive about this site? Normally, you'd want to have one building of a larger size to be able to service. That's what the tenants are looking for. So it's not a perfectly situated property that given its natural resources to light industrial development. And if you look at the prior zoning plan, the zoning map plan on, I think it said sheet three, and I had indicated, I had indicated that it looks like the original intent was to have the, the industrial part really extend in. But because of the street corridor, the floodplain, the steep slopes, extending this light industrial area into where it's owned is, is very difficult and problematic. Which is why if we go back to the light industrial plan, you see it can't be used, but it becomes a little disjointed because of the topography, because of the natural resources. It lends itself to a much different style of development, which is why we're proposing multifamily, where you can consolidate, make it compact, and put it together as an integrated development. So we believe there's another basis for why it makes sense to change this to residential, because that light industrial zoning really doesn't work now. Obviously, economic gain is not necessarily a basis for a rezoning or a zoning map change. But from a planning standpoint, it does make sense that this property would be better situated for residential use than an industrial use. So, Chuck, can you?
I have two quick questions. One is for Jason, current zoning is for Jason.
Great.
If two spaces per, that 1.7 is our current, our current answer. That was one of them. And the other one is, and I mentioned to John, this won't be coming, so I'd just like to do the answer now. And that is with the re, I know there was an outcry, if you will, on the Lorraine exit. So it was modified to have the extra traffic come on the Shellborne extension. So I just wondered, with the fact that's probably extra cars than originally originally planned for on that Lorraine extension, which is also a busy area of this township, with the study being during, for traffic during what I believe was the COVID era, I wanted to hear how that reconciles with traffic flow as one of my primary things I need to know more about.
Sure. We do actually tonight have a consultant here, Penoni Earl's here tonight to talk about that as well. So if you wouldn't mind me kind of passing...
Stand by. We're going to speak to that specifically.
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's one of the two biggest things I need to have more information on.
Thank you. Earl Armitage with Penoni Associates, as we mentioned, and the traffic consultant. So we did a traffic evaluation for the site, made a traffic impact assessment back in January that was submitted to the township. The traffic counts were actually done almost exactly a year ago today, November 29th, which was a Tuesday of 2022. So it was after the pandemic. Pendot originally required adjustments to traffic counts that were done during close to 2020 and even 2021. They would make the adjustment, obviously, the impacts of COVID after that time. And since we did the counts, they felt, Pendot has felt that the volumes are back to what, what is the new one. So they did not require any adjustments, and they actually updated their publications to state that those, those counts that were done in 2022 would be fine for this and any other factors.
And then we took that study into effect, went looking at extra traffic going into the Shellborne area.
Correct. So yes, our original study that was done did have the access coming out onto Lorraine. And that was, that was completed and submitted. The new study that would have to be done would look at redistributing all that traffic out to 422.
And has that been done yet or not, is actually?
We did that internally. We did not submit anything.
How's that look internally?
Internally, surprisingly, it's not that bad. The reason is that apartments are a pretty load generator. So we looked at the apartments, and then we also looked at the other plan here for, for manufacturing and warehousing. The big difference is the warehousing or the manufacturing by light has truck traffic. So we're going to introduce truck traffic. It's apartments, obviously, it's cars. They're a lot easier to get through the intersection than, than the trucks. Just comparing the volumes, the apartments have almost the same traffic as the manufacturing use for trip generation for the 170,000 square foot use. The manufacturer actually has a little bit higher peak hour, AM and PM peak hour trips than if it were apartments. But as I mentioned, it does add the cars in there. But we would have to do a complete traffic impact study with all the traffic.
Can you also be a process of what the study would look like, and not just volume, but how, how the security of the zoning change should, should be approved? And what would be expected? We currently work in a very, very volume setting, vision planning purposes, and we don't have to see the process.
Certainly. So, and yeah, if I could, if you could kind of repeat the question or summarize about it, because it is being recorded. So it would be helpful if you could try to summarize that question as you're answering it.
Sure. So the question was, what would be the next steps if the site was rezoned? What would be the interaction with both the township and Pendot related to traffic studies? So if the next step, if this were to be rezoned to, to allow the apartments, would be we would submit a scoping application to Pendot to scope the traffic impact study. And that would be done with both Pendot and the township. And one of the requirements of the township's ordinance is that the board of supervisors has to approve the study intersections. So Pendot would have what they would require to be studied, which would honestly just be the main intersection at, at Shellborne and 422 based on the amount of traffic that this would generate. They would only make a study that intersection. And then whenever the township would make this study as additional intersections, we would have to do that. So we would have that meeting. We would scope the traffic impact study, and then we would go out and do a complete, basically another complete traffic study. We would do updated traffic counts. We count the intersections during both the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour. We do multiple hours, and we look at the absolute worst hour. So we collect counts from say 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Whenever 15-minute intervals we record those in, whatever the worst hour is, that's what we want to follow. Because if it works in the worst hour, then it'll work better in all few times. And then we would add in the development traffic from the apartments. We look at a condition of existing conditions. We look at a proposed condition. What is it after we add in that traffic volume? We look at queuing. We look at what we call levels of service. It's a grade system similar to the grades you have at school, A through F. A is basically no traffic. You just drive through the intersection. F is failing level service, and it takes you over a minute to get through an intersection. And everything gets a letter grade. Then we have to analyze the impact of the development. If nothing is built, how does it operate? If the development is built, how does it operate? Any increase in delay for the overall intersection of over 10 seconds that's a result of the development, Pendot would make us mitigate that. So they would say, what improvement are you going to put in place, road improvement, to make this operate better than the 10-second impact of the development? 422 is a state road. Shellborne on the opposite side of the development is a state road. On the development side with the shopping center, that's combined with township. So anything we do with 422, anything we do with Shellborne would have to be reviewed and approved by Pendot through their highway occupancy permanent plans. So I believe that...
I appreciate I mentioned two questions. I'll also put the other one out because of insurance at your desk, or if it's sort of the engineering firm. But we, on a regular basis, get folks in, just this last meeting about parking and the cul-de-sacs and parking on the, out on the street, and then folks can't see their cars with no, no parking signs up. So it's been pretty habitual. We can't get, can't get emergency vehicles to be able to turn around, cul-de-sacs and the like. So what is going to be the plan for either getting the two? So what is going to be the plan for either getting the two spaces that we call for, or at least promise there's not going to be more than the need of 1.7 for hours? Like, what's the point actually here for?
I could turn that back to John, you speak to Hall later.
But those were the two things I wanted to know more about, so I'm obliged. And then we can fall back to the normal flow.
John, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm really up here. Regarding parking, parking, honestly, from our business is our tenants. Those are the people we want to please and make sure that they're recurrent tenants, because that's our business. If we can't press the tenants, we have an issue. There's other, there's other competing properties in the area that there are competitors. If they're unhappy in our complex, they're going to go to another complex. We keep data on everything, to the gallons of water that every apartment uses, we translate the silver, the electricity, gas, everything that we have, school-aged children, amount of residents, we track. It's our business. We need to know. We need to make sure our products handle it, our residents are happy, it all goes along. Parking's a big thing for us. So we have 3,500 apartments right now. We're building about 500 a year. We are historically about 1.5 hundred spaces per unit, how many cars we have. The reason it's important is we factor in a little bit of overflow. We're a little bit 1.25, 1.3. 1.5 is a little bit of overflow parking or gas and things of the nature. 1.75 is just the cushion to make sure that we're totally okay. One thing that we've done in the past with other townships, who have ordinance at 2, 2 and 1/4, 2 and 3, we can enter into a reserved parking agreement. All we do then is we design the stormwater, we design the purpose coverage, design everything in the community to meet the parking ordinances and all the subdivision and development ordinances and zoning ordinances as well. What we've done in the past then is entered into a agreement with the township. These 50 spots over here that would bring us till 2, we'll build a community, and at any point over the next five, six, seven, eight, nine years, however long we agree to, if you decide that we need that parking, we'll put it in. That way, the community's playing for it. It's all stormwater designed, it's everything. Honestly, I don't mind a parking issue because it affects my tenants. We have a property we own at Tupperhaw坎, it's called Reserve at Grand Mill, Fred Gunn and State Berks. That is part of 2.25 or 2.5. We have 70, 80, 100 spaces empty at all points in life. We had a problem with one building there, 11 buildings, 10 buildings, and they're all 21-unit buildings. We had one building that didn't have enough parking in front of it. Every other building had tons of empty spots. Tenant for all parking, parallel parking on the street where they shouldn't be, everything like that. It was an issue. People were complaining, tenants are on a rate. They don't put it at the township. They come to us, unfortunately. So what we did was we went back in for a zoning, that one we did plan for, that we had plenty of spots and doing some oversight on us. And we were back in that zoning leave to put in an extra 15 spaces right in front of that building. Everyone was satisfied. That's worst case scenario, but we basically, at this point, we do a dot matrix on the plan, and we measure the distance from the front door to every parking space. Because now we do our tenants complaining for shop, that parking, if they're not parking in proximity to the township's ways, they get upset. Nobody wants to carry their groceries. Nobody wants to walk that far. It's a big problem. It's something we really feel is on. The reserve parking agreement is really going to be found to be very beneficial for these values. That way, we're posted for financial security for it. If there's ever an issue, conflict. The other thing that we'll go through, should the plan be forward, we go through the full plan development process, is emergency services. We'll have to review and approve the plan, truck turning templates, everything like that. No parking signs, where the parking spots are located, so they can see, so they can get the trucks around. Mainly, we take the biggest fire truck and serve by a couple of different, you know, surrounding fire companies.
Very appreciated.
Yeah, and make sure that works. So it's, obviously, the first services needs to pull by upon that, and that'll be through the subdivision and development process.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
And before Chuck comes back up, the other thing is, is clearly we are way under total impermeable coverage here, given all the property that's not going to be developed. So if we are required to put in the additional parking, we will still be well within any zoning requirements of maximum total coverage. So it can be done. Just a question of whether it should be done. I just took away Chuck's last part, so he doesn't have any other statements to make. If we can go through, I think one of the other things John might want to talk about is just very briefly, tax implications here and how it becomes a net positive for the township.
So throughout the process, and a couple of the high-level other concerns that have been raised. When we were in front of the board before, there were a ton of residents in the audience, there was a lot of online, you know, social media items that were going around. We were asked to hold a public meeting that we held over at the country club. We ended up holding a second one as well. They were both well-attended, went through a lot of the residents' questions, comments, concern, tried to answer it to the best of our ability. A couple of things that came out of those meetings, and I'd just like to touch on real quick, because I think it's important. Taxes is a big thing. Our annual taxes that this complex would pay, if it was built out, would be $718,000. Of that, $164,000 go right to the township, and $553,000 of that would go to the school district. So obviously, there's a big tax incentive for the township that this development would bring to it. One thing that is nice about our company is we are a full-service land development company. So we take it from land acquisition, zoning and rentals and titles. We did the site work ourselves. We hired, you know, site contractor, GC, the site worker. That then passes to our vertical construction company. They build the apartments. Then it passes to leasing staff, these are the apartments that passes to our management. We plan to own this complex for 35 to 50 years, as long as, as long as the complex should last. We're not, we're not here to come and quickly get it approved and flip it to another builder. We're not going to get it approved, you know, rent it out, stabilize it, flip it to someone else. We're here to stay. We're here to be a part of the community. So there's a lot of fault that goes into our projects to make sure, A, we provide the best experience for our tenants, and B, we, you know, are positive impact. So those are, you know, one of the big things, we face taxes. Another thing that comes up, a lot of school-aged children. If you look at all the national studies, they're based on the census data. They led to either .08 or .07 school-aged children per apartment. And I know that sounds really low, and everyone always balked at the number, because that ends, you know, that's eight school-aged children per 100 apartments. By school-aged children, you mean K through 12, kindergarten through 12 through 8, public school-aged children. So that's everybody attending a public school system in the community. Now, the number sounds low, but unfortunately, it's accurate. We, every year, in order to prove this, because we've recovered our departments with good mobile data, most, a lot of our apartments are close, based in Berks County. We file a write-to-know request. We have all that documentation from this past year that we submit to the township for review. We request a specific list of every school-aged children in the public community school where we have complexes, and we get all that data from the school. Our actual is .06. And what we've done in those numbers, we have shoot higher-wise buildings down in downtown riding missing, who have virtually zero children. We've taken those out. So we try to give you true, accurate data. And that is reflected with all of our current projects in the, we're comparing Harrisburg to the High Valley and Down South as well. But that is, that is true in actual data, and it's proven it's been consistent for the last five years since we've been rolling that data. Some of the other areas that came up, the floodplain donation, we're staying out of the floodplain. There's a question about bog turtle. Did run a PND search, which did have a bog turtle head. It was inside of the consultant's house, confirmed, there's no habitat, habitats. That's something that, again, that'll be rechecked during the MDS, the PERC process. One other, one other big comment that came up, that some of the emergency services personnel and also some of the township staff that had been brought up. The current app, proposed emergency access goes out to the shopping center. There was some concern and some positive feedback about the fact that we might bring either it out to Lorraine or additional emergency access out to Lorraine, both of which would be gated and or, you know, not to box a lot of it, or some, or what the emergency services wanted to be. So that's something that if we move forward with, if zoning change was approved, and we move forward to subdivision and development, we would effectively back that out. We may propose either, it's 5, so as long as emergency services have it. The 23 acres on the salad property, we'd be willing, you know, should this be, we'd be willing to give this to that front developments. That's 23 acres of, not refouched. There's a lot of natural resources, so it's a good piece to preserve. We'd be more than willing to do that. We addressed the COVID counts versus the current counts. Those are some of the other things that we could open up.
I wanted to add one other thing, just so you don't have to just believe John's company's reporting on school-aged children per unit. Montgomery County Planning Commission about a decade ago did a study on school-aged children in new housing units. They did a whole county-wide study. They determined that in multifamily new units, such as what's proposed here, the average number of school-aged children per multifamily unit was .06. So that's an independent study, not done by Metropolitan, so you can see it's consistent, very close to what John's numbers are showing, which is .07. So it is documented. They'll tell you that obviously, single-family detached generates the most, single-family attached the next most, and then multifamily is the least, particularly when it's one or two bedroom units. Just wanted to add that, if you want to. The rest of the team is here to answer any questions you may have, or if you want to have the public provide their comments of this document, it's fine, it's wonderful.
Anything to question?
I would just ask that we had public comments.
Okay, that's fine.
There is none.
There is none.
If anyone from the public wants to make a comment, please feel free to raise your hand, we'll get you signed in, and you can provide comment. Otherwise, okay, there is a gentleman, okay. And so as we're-
Yep.
Be great.
Come on, call you.
As we're getting signed, if any board members have any questions or comments, if they can identify themselves in the quarter, that would be extremely helpful.
And I would ask you, sir, to step up in the podium, give us your first and last name, and take us away.
Mark Anderson, living at the township in Lorraine Road. Concerns I have regarding this complex is the bog turtles. Supposedly, there's been study done, sir, just developed, this development will not affect bog turtles. Has anybody, is there any documentation that I report to prove that? Also, the wetlands that are down that area, that's federally protected property. How is the runoff going to affect these wetlands? And then the other concern is exor township of 422 is a traffic nightmare. Adding 432 cars to a nightmare, you're asking for nothing but disaster. That means the traffic, it packs up, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, it's backed up all the way down the avenue, the traffic we have now. If you add 432 cars there, it's going to be horrendous. Our police department does a fantastic job. They don't have time to put up with this. This increase in traffic is absurd. It's going to be impeding the emergency services in the township. You have the senior life center there. You have emergency vehicles. You need to get into their kinds. The increased traffic, this has been thought out, and what's the resolve to make this so it isn't a nightmare? Those are my questions and comments. Thank you.
Another comment we have in the audience, Mr. or Miss Heather Cole.
Yeah, Heather, I live on the other-
And if I could have you get closer to the microphone, too, sorry.
I'm sorry. In Kiziski?
Earth.
I live on the other side of the development. I'm in the back large corner property. Now, I approached this with their public meeting. There's going to be all those houses with all these lights shining in our backyards. And I speak for a lot of the residents on that housing side. And we bought those properties never dreaming somebody was going to develop down in, down in the Antion Creek area. How do they propose that we're not going to see all these lights every evening shining through our kitchen windows?
Just to clarify, you say you live on the other side. You live on the other side of the river? And this is being, yeah, this is being, okay, so you're on the other side of the river.
All of our homes there are back right up to the creek. And we can see the Home Depot light from our backyards. Imagine all of those apartment complexes with the lighting they're going to need to light their land up. Is that what you call light pollution? Yes. That is my biggest concern.
Any other public comments? Any questions from the board? Comments from the board? Anything further from the applicant?
Yep, just thank you very much, Ben, for the opportunity to present and answer questions.
In one housekeeping item, we probably should have had you all place on the road, if we could just do that right there.
Gentlemen, I have a question or two.
Okay, let's place them on the road. Yeah, just do it.
Do you swear or affirm that you said, you will say, after this point, that you're sure that the right provision will be implemented?
I did.
Thank you. It sounded there was some questions from the board.
Sure.
Yeah, I wanted to hear, could you guys respond to the two questions? If you thought any of those things through. I know you talked a little bit about some of them, but if you could elaborate on that.
Sure, I'll start with the dealing with the bog turtle and stormwater. All the, all the issues that were raised are land development issues, which obviously would be taken care of during the land development process. In terms of the bog turtle impacts, we're required in order to move forward with development on this property, and as well as robotic stormwater management to get clearance from the regulatory authorities, which includes, in this case, PA Fish and Boat or US Fish and Wildlife, the bog turtle. We did do a bog turtle, and I believe we've already received a clearance from those agencies in terms of using this conceptual development plan and stormwater, because the, while a bog turtle hit may occur, it doesn't necessarily mean you have a bog turtle right there on top of where you're going to develop. They really do it in a two-mile radius. And if you're in that area where the endangered species have been found, they give you a hit, and then you have to go through the clearance process. So that would have to be done. It's already been done. It would have to be done again in order to get approval for development. In terms of stormwater management, very similarly, we're required to comply with the Township's Stormwater Management Ordinance regulations as well as the state slash counties' regulations under the NPPS, the National Blue Discharge Elimination System Regulations, which is a federal program administered by the state, then delegates the county to administer. Those all have the regulations in terms of rate, border quality, and volume as well. So you have to comply with all of those for this project. They also take into account where you're discharging into, what order should you're doing, the discharge into, what's one receiving. Is it a high-quality stream? Is it a cold-quarter fishery? You go through a specific analysis in order to get that permit. So all of those things get handled during the land development process, reviewed by the township, as well as the other outside agencies, regulatory authorities.
What is the proposed buffer right now from the edge of the stream or the wetlands, just to give everyone perspective?
Sure. And part of that is also dealing with the landscaping comment that was just brought up. Regardless of whether this was developed under the light industrial, as a manufacturer for this project, we need to comply with the township's buffering requirements, different types of residential or commercial industrial. So those issues with lights shining out, you can easily take care of with the different types of vegetative buffering. Now, in terms of the actual setback differences, I'd have to- Now, in terms of the actual setback differences, I'd have to, yes, Chuck, he knows, the approximate distance, I believe, from the edge of a limit of disturbance behind the garages going across, Chuck, do you have an approximation of how far that might be?
Two feet.
Both? If you could come up here, they might, since it's on the record.
Yeah, I don't have the exact distance, and it is going to vary, but to give you an idea of what we're dealing with, each of those larger buildings are approximately 65 feet wide, and then length is about 200 feet wide or 200 feet long. So if you're just kind of going off those buildings at this point, I'm going to say you're probably 120 feet, you know, maybe 180 feet at the closest part, and then you're probably a good, you know, 200 to 300 feet to the floodplain on the widest part. And that's just to the edge of the flood, basically, so between the buildings.
And you said, just had one more. If you would put warehouses there, you know, that us board supervisor really can't stop because it's a viral use, and so we have a choice, do we want warehousing or, or this community is kind of the...
Right. And I was going to say, if we switch to the other plan, that shows a light industrial, and this is just a representative example, to the left of that building, those are all loading docks. So instead of having regular cars and residential there, you could have constant trucks coming in and out in that area. They're much noisier, they idle, you know, especially if it's a, a reef or truck, if it's a refrigerated truck. So you could wind up with that type of use here, higher up and adjacent to the residential. So even though you might have distance, you'll have a lot more sound, vibration, noise, those types of impacts that you necessarily would equate with this type of use versus a more consistent and congruent residential use. So I think it's easier to deal with headlights, which can be dealt with with low-lying shrubs close to parking areas, versus the impacts that you potentially get from how it's zone burned. So, and so how it's zone currently is a used bike ride, so we couldn't say, oh, you can't have the truck idling there. That's right. Because it's in the district. That's right. But if you change it to residential, you won't get that use on this property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. They, they zoned this light industrial several years ago. Those are the meetings when they edit, they have areas. And I think we zoned this light industrial because it's the only area left in Exeter Township where we can have light industrial. So I don't know, I'd like to know, late after the meeting, how many acres are in that light industrial area? And I think your own engineers made a comment that there's not a lot of buildable sites there. So we would lose this as a buildable site if, if we turn it into residential. And there's no place in that area to go to, to build light industrial. We, we do have an area that's already built up. I toured it a couple of days ago, and there's not a lot of truck traffic, you know, in light industrial. It's not like, you know, I'm not fearful that there will be heavy, heavy trucks coming back. I don't believe that. Maybe some, but not like when you're situate, and I'm not, I don't want to speculate on this. But, so I'd like to find out, once these acres are gone, how much in, in that area is still built? So we zoned that light industrial for a purpose, and we have another property called Promenade that we just rezoned for residential. Maybe you might want to take a look at that. But that's, that's what the township has been promoting over there. And are we, isn't, could that still be used as an entryway to light industrial if they go back there? But we still have trucks and vehicles going right past your apartment complex, right? I mean, is that going to be a dead end? Do we have to find another way into the zoning area? Does anybody know?
I think we, what you're saying, Dave, is if, no, I mean, if, if this map change...
Sure.
I, I think the question is, if, if this map change were to go through and this was turned into an urban residential property, would, would, would traffic access the light industrial zone through this? No. They would, if we, no.
How would they, how would they access that, that area?
Would we get a, yeah, map?
So, if I can, so the way this, this is looking at, and it's a different orientation than the way the zoning map was oriented, but you'll see for this property, the access would just come in off the shellboard, right? And there would be no access out to the rain. The property on the other side, which is still part of this overall property, which is currently zoned a lot, would also be zoned urban residential, so there would be no light industrial development there as well. So if we go back to the zoning map, the third slide, okay, you'll see that whole area. This whole area here would be urban residential. The development would be actually up in this corner. So there'd be no light industrial traffic coming by here. The light industrial would be down here in this area, which would likely be, you know, accessed by some extension back here of that cul-de-sac or some other means, but it would not be going past the, that's the problem.
Okay, great. So I'd like to know, when will we lose this change to light to residential? What's left, what's left of that light industrial zone?
I, I could subtract this probably light industrial, I mean, give you that exact picture.
Okay, good. So that's right, right?
No.
If you could just...
The only, the only other comment that I have is, I want to get your, your revenue analysis, okay? So your revenue analysis to the township says that we're going to get $164,000 annually. And I don't even think that that will pay for one policeman for the traffic issues that you're going to cause from the increase population that, that's going to bring, your apartments are going to bring us. And maybe even if we have to get more fire people, we're not hip out hiring professional firefighters. So this revenue won't even come closely covering one police officer. What happened?
One of the previous studies that we prepared was the complete revenue analysis. This is the summary, this is in a cross standpoint. In the, in the full report, which we can provide you...
Can you speak up a little?
In the full report, which we can provide you, it actually breaks down and shows the expenses attributable to this neighborhood, and that, and it also shows, you know, so that...
Well, that's, you know, if you have this work.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
That's good.
Yes, we, we, we had that previously with us. We were asked to present this in this, in this fashion. We can easily bring that, that information back for you. Both, both reports even when you net out all the expenses and cost that educate the school age children, there's still a net positive revenue to the township and the school district, once you take all the expenses attributable to the community out.
Mr. Redd, what I would suggest is, if you do want to volunteer that study, we'll leave the record open for that purpose. If you get it, sooner the better. Local market is advocate too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I just want to follow up, question onto that. Do you have, since you collect so much data, do you have data of how many times police officers are called to the site, or how many times emergency services are called to your apartment buildings? Do you have any data to that effect?
Yes, we do.
So that, that would be great, to see that information.
I apologize, I keep looking to Matt, he served his first four years with the company in operations, so, which I've never seen, he knows a lot more of the operational things. Any questions, comments?
Thank you. I'm concerned about the number of children that are going to be attending the school. I've seen, for example, over in Laurel Springs, it started out supposed to be one child, there was two children that you have. And then it's four too. I am really concerned about the two bedrooms that you have, because they could fit two kids in there. And if you talk to the school at all, there's got to be an impact there. And that school can't afford the traffic on the line at, at section of the school, the building of the school. I just don't believe your numbers, especially when they're decadal, no offense to you about how many children will be there. So I've seen it happen too many times here, they say one number, and it comes up twice then.
So, just to clarify, the, the, the studies that we're talking about here, the one study that Greg did mention, Montgomery County was a decadal. Our actual numbers are current through this year. We do it every year in, around May, so we count for the entire school year. We do, so that number is up to date. The national studies are based on the census data. The census data, obviously, the last time, obviously, the last time it was done was 2020. So they're only three years old at this point, and, and they are just slightly above what we're actually showing. So they're, they were at .08 from the 2010 data, they're at .07 from the 2020 data. So it, it, it is trending slightly down. We, have I spoken to the school district directly? No, I can't. I do know that there were members from the school district at the public meeting that we had. Many of these questions were asked. Unfortunately, the reason we have the data we have over the last five years from the school districts is because nobody believes the number. It, it's hard to believe, it is, I can be honest. One thing that helps, hurts our data, but helps the argument, we take every single complex, we one complex that the park amount of our complex borders Wilson School District, Elementary School, Wilson School District, very good school district. Many people come to that community to get their kids in Wilson School District, come to that park and make, that community is higher. I think we have twenties, low twenties, in, in, you know, 160 apartments there. So, and that's our worst complex from, I mean, worst in a bad way, but that's our, our highest school age children complex. We include that in numbers, so it drives our numbers up. The one, the numbers that we, the complexes we excluded from our numbers are the high ratios that we know almost everybody has 55 and under, and we've never seen a children walk always or be out of the bus station. So we're trying to give you the most accurate data we have. We could definitely follow up on the school district and have information for you.
I would appreciate if you follow up on the school district. Now, I also have concerns about the road in the back. I want to go for, you know, back to the sea road or anything. My children are going to be out down there, what they do, you know, exploring, trying to build a treehouse someplace and everything. And if they start getting out in the traffic, especially because it's Home Depot, they could definitely see some severe accidents. And I don't want to see anybody hurt, and that makes kids, the kids...
They will. We, we do have onsite property management and onsite maintenance personnel. So we have employees onsite, on track. So we do take note of a lot of that, you know, people are trying to build vest regard, so people are, you know, acting outside, the government's of their apartments, and we do control that. The emergency access that is entering into the back of the, the Home Depot, the Redner Shopping Center, that's not out into the, you know, front where all the traffic is, that's out into the back where the loading docks are, there's much less of a travel access road, but I, I do understand the concern.
Yeah, especially kids, and they see they can find up on site, and they get a little of the, you know, and the school.
And do you think that some of the concerns have, not the first person who raised concern, but the emergency access in the shopping center? And I think honestly, we've had more positive support for emergency access out to the rain, but that's something we'll need to flush out. As, as I mentioned before, we're fine either way. We just want the best, the most thought-out solution, that the emergency personnel are going to be the most happy with and the worst supervisor. So we'd be okay with the other direction. Like I said, there's been a lot of positive paths towards the emergency access model where we...
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other couple of comments? Okay. Well, we thank you all for coming. This concludes the hearing. We will leave the record open. Do you think, like, Riley, you could sum it up?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll leave the record open until then. And this concludes the hearing.
Great. Thank you all, thank you.
Appreciate it.